Good evening and welcome to the Mount Airy Candidates Forum in support of the May 2nd Town Council Election. My name is Bill Butts. I'm Vice Chair of the Mount Airy Planning Commission, and I'm also a member of the Carroll Media Center Executive Board. Tonight's forum is being held at the Mount Airy Senior Center rather than Town Hall in order to accommodate a larger in-person audience. The forum is also being broadcast live on cable channels HD 1086 and Local Channel 19, as well as livestreamed on Facebook, YouTube, and the Media Center website at carrollmediacenter.org. In addition, the forum will also be available for on-demand viewing and will repeat regularly on CMC's cable channels up to the May 2nd election. The Community Media Center is providing this programming as a public service. It does not endorse any political candidate or political organization. Instead, CMC's goal is to establish an equal platform for political advocacy and to provide local residents with information about the candidates seeking local office. CMC encourages citizens to learn more about the candidates and to take an active part in the electoral process. I'll now turn the program over to the Candidate Forum Moderator Bob Blueball, Managing Editor Digital Content for the Carroll Media Center. Bob?
Thank you, Bill. We're really pleased to have all five candidates with us tonight. We'll introduce them really quickly. Jason Evans, Clayton Gilbert, Stephen Pops-Craft, Carl Munder, and Tim Washabaugh. Now, let's get to the rules for tonight's forum. We're going to go in alphabetical order, and each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. That'll be followed by a question and answer session in which each candidate will have 90 seconds to make an opening statement. They'll be timed. We have a timer that will give them a little wave with 30 seconds to go, and then at the time that their time is up, we'll ask them to stop speaking at that point. All responses, of course, will be timed and we'll be very careful to make sure that we keep it as fair as we possibly can. Again, we're going to go in order. We'll switch orders as we go on so that each person gets the equal chances to answer first. And we'll go for about an hour and a half tonight. We'll be wrapping up around 8 o'clock and hope that it's a very informative and entertaining forum. So let's get started. Our candidates may now introduce themselves and present a two-minute opening statement, and we're going to start with Mr. Jason Evans.
Good evening, Mount Airy. It's great to see such a good turnout tonight in such a big election for Mount Airy and the town. This election's really going to change the landscape of everything moving forward, so the next four years are going to be very, very critical. Thank you, guys, for all coming out and supporting all of us. It's not an easy job to step up and try to take the reins on the committee because it's a hard job. I'd like to start by introducing myself. Obviously, I'm Jason Evans. I was raised right here in Maryland, but I had been in Mount Airy for almost eight years. My beautiful family and I moved to Mount Airy for the small-town charm and fantastic people. One of the first times I ever went into the Safeway right on Ridgeville, I went home to my wife and I told her how nice everybody was. I told her, "This is not PG County." So it kind of blew me away, so I immediately fell in love with the town, and I was glad that I moved here. So what am I doing up here right now? I'll be honest. I'm not sitting up here because I have nothing to do and I'm bored. Mount Airy, excuse me, I am here because of my passion, my family, and my town. I love Mount Airy, and I want my children to grow up here. They deserve to live in a beautiful, little town with awesome people and great schools, not to mention the best sports program around. Excuse me, I lost my track there. A little over a year ago, I heard about developments and apartments coming into town, so I began watching and attending the council and commission meetings. These meetings and other concerning topics led me to throw my hat in the ring. Ever since then, I've been actively watching and attending in order to try to make a difference. I'm also up here to be a voice for the people. Early on while walking, I was speaking to a nice young lady in Wildwood through her screen door, and what she said to me reaffirmed why I'm doing this. She looked me in the eye and she said, "Thank you, son. I just can't fight anymore."
Mr. Gilbert?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clayton Gilbert, and in thinking about an opening statement, I just can't help but say that I absolutely hate talking about myself. It is, it's not about me. It's about you because I am here to represent you. I'm new to Mount Airy in 2020. The military is what brought me out here, and I feel like I really, really lucked out. You're 20 minutes from everything. You don't have to go 45 minutes both ways for butter. If you want to go to Home Depot, it's right down the road. If you want some scenery, it's right up the road. And in my travels, I've seen what happens to places like this that just get railroaded, and I'm fearful that that's going to happen to you. So that's why I'm up here, because I want to stick around for a long, long time. And, you know, who wants to move out of Mount Airy to go down into PG County? Who wants to go down to DC? We don't need to bring that here. So, yeah, that's, that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Craft?
Greetings. Ooh. Greetings. For those of you who may not know me yet, my name is Stephen Ross-Craft, you can put it up a little bit more, and I am running for Mount Airy Town Council. First off, let me thank Bob and the entire Carroll County Media Center crew for putting together this Town Hall tonight, as well as for helping all of us with our brief five-minute campaign videos. I think all of us up here tonight will attest that you made us look a heck of a lot better than we would have done ourselves, so thank you very much. Secondly, thanks to everyone here tonight for coming out to hear our vision for Mount Airy. If you like what you hear tonight, please bring your neighbors and bring them out to vote on the 2nd of May. I am on the ballot as Stephen Pops-Craft. My family calls me Pops. My Mount Airy baseball team calls me Pops. My friends and my extended family call me Pops, and Mount Airy is part of that extended family. I am a confirmed resident, a father with two amazing young men, a government communications developer, a Methodist musician, a baseball coach, a French teacher, a Boy Scout evangelist, and soon-to-be a merit badge counselor, and once a month, a guitar circle strummer here in Mount Airy. I'm a third-generation Scot from Edinburgh, Scotland, and I will employ a work ethic developed from my grandfather to ensure Mount Airy's public health and safety, preserve our current established landscape from reckless development, and protect and enhance our established Mount Airy institutions and promote peace between our Town Council and our awesome mayor. Thank you, and I anticipate your questions tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Munder?
Thank you, Bob. Before I get into my opening statement, I would like to first thank the Senior Center for hosting this event, Cal Media Center for doing this event and our videos, the Mount Airy Senior Task Force for all the support they have done for this event, and all those involved with putting on this forum. So I would like to say hello to the residents of Mount Airy. My name is Carl Munder, and I'm running for reelection to the Town Council. First, I want to say that I've been honored to be your council member for the past four years. Second, I want to tell the people of Mount Airy a little bit more about myself if you do not already know. My family and I have been town residents for more than 10 years. I have more than 30 years of customer and public service experience. I've been an area resident for more than 40 years, have a Bachelor of Arts degree in Environmental Studies and a Master of Science in Environmental Science with a concentration in public policy, and I'm independent, open-minded, and honest. Over the past four years as a council member, I have focused on ordinances that control growth, positively impact the health and safety of residents, trying to make sure your tax dollars are spent wisely, support the expansion of recreational opportunities for residents, and the preservation of the historic atmosphere and small-town charm of Mount Airy. So I would hope that everyone that's listening and watching tonight will come out May 2nd and cast a vote. So thank you, and that's it, Bob.
Thank you. And Mr. Washabaugh?
I would like to thank Bob for moderating. It's been a pleasure to work with you and your team throughout this process. Good evening, citizens of Mount Airy. My name is Tim Washabaugh, and while I am also uncomfortable talking about myself, I feel it is important that you understand why I am qualified to be your representative. I have been a resident of Mount Airy for 15 years, and I plan on being here for many more. I care not only about this town's history, but its future. For the last 15 years, I have owned and operated a food distributorship company based in Montgomery County. I run my company with a fiscally conservative mindset, making sure that all decisions are based on both short-term and long-term gains, while cutting costs where necessary to have the maximum return on investment. Since 2014, I have been volunteering my time coaching football, softball, and lacrosse. In 2019, I was elected to be the Commissioner of the MEA football program. Since then, I have helped continue to grow a reputable program that provides a positive experience for the families we serve. I head a board of operations that, among other things, balances a yearly operating budget of over $100,000. In 2020, I was honored to receive the Volunteer of the Year Award from the Woodbine Recreation Council based on my contributions to the youth sports community. I played a major role in establishing the girls' softball program for MEA and worked with other volunteers and the town of Mount Airy for over three years to secure the town's first softball field at Watkins Park. As of today, we now have two softball fields, which has played a pivotal role in supporting the growing girls' softball program. When I saw the need for more athletic fields, I sought a way to get more involved, and in 2021, I was appointed to serve on the Town's Parks and Recreation Commission. I am a part of a team that fairly inequitably helps the different programs find solutions to our lack of fields. In 2022, I was appointed to the role of Athletic Director for MEA. This position oversees all sports and acts as an intermediary when needed to resolve conflicts. In conclusion, I have spent the last 10 years investing my time by being a successful advocate for our youth community. I believe it is now time for me to step up and be an enthusiastic and devoted elected official for the entire town of Mount Airy.
Thank you. Now, let's turn to the Q and A portion of the program. The questions posed for tonight's candidates are a mixture of prepared questions sent in by Mount Airy residents and questions brought to us tonight by members of tonight's audience. Questions might have been edited for clarity and combined with other questions, and again, we'll try to ask as many as we possibly can in the next hour and a half or so. And thanks to everyone who submitted questions. Candidates, again, remember, you will have 90 seconds to answer each question, and you'll get a warning when 30 seconds remain. Okay? Super. So this time, we'll start with Mr. Gilbert, and we'll go along and finish with Mr. Evans. First question. What do each of you think your duties and responsibilities will be while serving on Town Council, and how much time will each of you pledge to dedicate to the town?
Duties and responsibilities, first is to listen to you. We have to get your input to then take that in the direction that you want to go. This is not about any individual Town Council member going up there and taking their agenda and just running with it. So it's important to have those conversations and have a very, very open communication and a dialogue, going back and forth, taking that information and then doing our best to use it responsibly. As far as time goes, I'm not one to make up things to do. I'm going to take as much time as we need to. Some things are going to take months. Some things may even take years to figure out and to do the right way. That's something that you should know. We can't have immediate solutions that are going to happen overnight to all the problems that we face. So with that, the amount of time that I'm going to pledge is the amount of time that's needed to take care of the issues at hand.
Thank you. Mr. Craft?
Clearly, for those of you who haven't seen my video, I'll just restate. I think there's a larger issue facing our town, much more long-term, and it's a concern for me. It's the health and safety of our population. I think our first goal as a Town Council member is to take care of our population's health, and that touches, and I'm particularly concerned, if I may get up on my pedestal, with post-pandemic isolation. I don't know if, I don't know if any of you have been tracking this, but everywhere from our youth to our adolescents to our seniors, there's a real, yeah, isolation among people, and I particularly think as a Town Council member, that's my first priority. Clearly, the second hot potato is our reckless development that's been going on. It's been, it's been railroaded down us, and guess what? There's hope there. There's hope there, and we can talk about that probably. I'm sure we'll get another question there. I also am very concerned about the maintenance of our current educational institutions, our heritage, and praise the Lord, we saved the Flatiron Building. And finally, here we are again, but I am looking forward to a peaceful relationship between the Town Council and our mayor because goodness gracious, we're going to get a lot more done for the town that way. And my time, I'm an empty nester, so time is on my side.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. The duties of the council members and time that I will devote to the council, I believe, is the question. The counseling duty, the council duties that I have currently, I want to say, take care of is listening to the citizens and the concerns, taking care of town issues ranging from a host of issues, from the budget to development to the safety and health of town citizens during COVID and the police force, and the time that it takes currently for me to do this job is a 24/7 job. I wake up thinking about it. I go to bed thinking about it, and I will continue to do so and will work tirelessly and effortlessly for the citizens of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh?
Well, if, hello, if I'm lucky enough to get elected, first and foremost, my sole responsibility is to treat our citizens and our government with respect, open, honest communication, and to ensure that I am doing my part to represent you in the correct way. Whatever that entails, that's my ultimate job as a council member, to be somebody that represents this town in the correct way, that treats its residents in the correct way. I will put a severe onus on looking into our budget. I feel like that's another major responsibility of our council members to ensure that every single dollar that we are putting across and spending is giving an equal or paramount return on investment that is spent. We cannot continue to keep throwing money away needlessly. So I will do my part to look at the budget, to take away unnecessary spending, to build our reserves back up. As far as time is concerned, I'm lucky enough to be a business owner. I can set my schedule. I have stopped coaching softball in the spring specifically to take on this role, so I'm looking forward to spending my time, instead of representing a coach and a youth organization, representing the Mount Airy town as a whole.
Thank you. And Mr. Evans?
So some of the duties and responsibilities I feel like I'm going to take on is first and foremost, leading you guys, leading the citizens of Mount Airy, whether that's into overdevelopment, whether that's into where do we put a police station, whatever the cause may be or the topic. I want to be able to address those situations and answer the questions. Full transparency, you guys should know what's going on in the town, and that comes from us, the leaders up here. So as, as your leader, I will make sure that I'm being honest and transparent with you guys so that you know what's going on within the town. That includes water. That includes whatever the thing may be. So my, my vision is to become a leader of small municipalities in the water problem because it's not just us that's experiencing it. Towns all over the state and country are dealing with it, so why can't Mount Airy lead that charge and figure out what's going on and how we can fix it, how we can get grants, how we can get money to fix it, how we can get the government to pay for it. They pay for everything else. Why not this, for the public and safety of our people? As far as time goes, I'm a very passionate person. Whether it's coaching or schooling or work, whenever I invest my time into something, I'm all in, and that includes this town. I'm very passionate about this town and where I want to see it go, so that's all in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Craft. What are your short- and long-term goals for the town? And what skills and qualifications will you bring to the table that will be instrumental in making these plans into a reality?
Okay, excuse me. Back to where I started. Again, I think, I think our public health and safety is primordial. And one of the ways, and admittedly, I've kind of been going around and talking to people, of course, and I would like to see us, I've just had some recent health problems, and I don't know that we are quite as united as where to go for different health problems. I had to work really hard to get some of my healthcare, and I went and I've talked to some of the pharmacists, and the pharmacy network is good, but, but, but the ecumenical network, curiously enough, there's, we have three churches on Main Street, and I'll tell you the truth, two of the ministers said, "Well, we've never met each other." So first and foremost is that, and I have to talk fast, I'm sorry. My qualifications, so professionally, I'm not going to go too into that, but I've worked in financial services, so I will clearly be a budget advocate, a smart budget advocate. I'm also a telecoms guy from way back, and I don't know about any of you folks, but we need to get our carriers involved in our town in a better degree and get our, our whole carrier system. We have an Eiffel Tower with all the cell phone things that are necessary to have a good reception in our area, and it's awful. And finally, I'm a corporate communications guy in my professional life, and I absolutely would like us to enhance our town communications towards our population and our educational movement toward those, that same population. Sorry for the over.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
Thank you, sir. The short- and long-term goals for the town of mine, my short-term goals would be controlled development to a point where it is compatible with the surrounding land uses. I'm currently doing, doing that at the best I can at council meetings and through various ordinances, and to make sure that the, that the budget is spent wisely, which we have been and which I have been an advocate for over the past four years of fiscally, fiscal responsibility, and I will continue to do that. Same thing with development, the health and safety of the town residents is paramount, paramount for me also. We are currently working through the well-contamination crisis. We are seeking federal grants and state grant money for that. I will continue to do so and be an advocate for that. And the experience, and also, I do work well with the mayor in many issues and many concerns with it. I supported him when he was Town Council President, and I currently support him and will continue to support him as, as mayor. The skills that I bring to the table to continue these things are basically the four past years of experience on the council. I have seen what has happened when we do not keep a watchful eye over the budget, over the other branches of government and other members of town staff and everything else. I will continue to bring those skill sets to the table for the next four, four years of reelection. Also, my education has allowed me to focus on policy concentration.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh?
Short term is very simple for me. I want to earn your trust. Nothing else will happen unless I earn your trust, unless we as a governing body earn your trust. How can we represent the people that do not trust us? Right now, that will be my sole focus. I want to speak with as many of you as I can, figure out exactly what it is that you want, not necessarily what I want. Mr. Henderson, I know that you've told me plenty, so it's all about what you want. I have my own thoughts and ideas, but if I don't represent you and I only represent myself, I'm not doing my job effectively, and therefore, I don't deserve your trust. It's the hardest thing to build and the easiest thing to lose, and I do not intend on losing it. As far as other short-to-long-term goals, I want to come in and control the growth that's getting ready to happen. I want to really dive in to how the Beck property was zoned. I know we'll probably talk about that later. And I want to ensure that we keep Mount Airy the exact same town that we have now with slow, sustainable growth that we can then sustain over time without just completely blowing this town up and turning it into everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Some of my short-term goals, obviously, the, the health and safety of our community, the water. I'd like to educate myself as much as possible and get a grip on the water problems. I know it's very hard. I'm not knocking anybody. We're doing what we can do to try to make it work. But I think we need, again, we need to be leaders in that realm. We need to figure out what the water issues are and how to fix them. The budget and lack of reserve, you know, I was very stunned to see that we don't have a lot of reserves and we're paying for a roundabout or other things that, that are not necessary right now. So again, I want to educate myself on the budget and what we can do to trim costs and generate revenue for the town. Zoning, some of the zoning is not simply good. It's terrible. MXD is not, as it's written, is not good, in my opinion. So I want to educate myself on the zoning and work with, and collaborate with everybody and make sure that we're putting the best zoning forward. Long-term goals, support local businesses. The only way we can grow as a community and maintain and be sustainable is to support our local businesses. If we're going out to the restaurants and we're getting them money, then they're going to grow, and Main Street's going to be bustling, and we can go down there and enjoy ourselves. The schools, the blueprint program that's coming out or is already out, we need to educate ourselves on that. I have small children, and the next 10 to 12 years, they're going to be in schools, and I want them to get the same fair shake as every other county in this state, so that's one of my long-term goals as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
First thing we need to do short-term is stop the bleeding, full stop on everything, and figure out what's actually going on. I probably have a sliver of all the information. Beck property is an example. I thought one thing. I had a conversation that completely changed my thought process. If that's happening to me, that's also happening to you. So we need to put a full stop on everything and make sure that we have a clear picture of what's actually going on. Second short-term, education. You need to be informed of that so that you can give your opinions and then come to the future Town Council with your voices and your opinions so that we can then see what we want to do long-term because some of the long-term ideas that I may have might not align with what we can even do. As far as skills that I bring to the table, I'm contractor. So when I walk into somebody's home, I ask you, "What do you want? What do you need? And what are you wishing for?" And we're going to try and blend all that together and give you the best result that I can that's fiscally responsible. When you look at this town, you know, think of opening up your pocketbook to do a project. We can, how do I word this? We can't bulldoze everything. We have to maintain what we have. We only have so much money to do that, just like your homes. You only have so much money to maintain your homes. So we need to come up with the best solutions so that you can stay in your homes as long as possible.
Okay, next question, and this time, we'll start with Mr. Munder. All right. What is your position on reassignment of financial responsibility from the mayor?
Let me write it down. My position on the financial reassignment of the, of the, you know, the reassignment of fiscal responsibilities from the mayor. Currently, we work through a ordinance change that we all agreed upon or a charter change that we were all happy with, so I'm totally content with leaving that as, as is. It was a good, workable solution that allowed proper oversight related to the fiscal responsibilities of the mayor and the Town Council oversight. So I'm happy with what, what was passed by the council on that. So that is, and I also believe that it should be retained by one person, not the council. It should be always in, the fiscal responsibility needs to rest in one person to form, for the formation of the, of the budget and the spending and overall fiscal oversight and well-being of the town. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh? Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry. What is your position on the reassignment of financial responsibility from the mayor?
I'm totally against it, to be honest with you. Our mayor in our charter is defined as our CEO, which means he is responsible for the town. We, as a community, have elected a leader to be responsible for the town, and therefore, if we were to remove his elective responsibilities, we nullify the entire process of the election. So if we put him in that seat for a specific reason of CEO, he is there to uphold his responsibilities to our town. We, as a council, are a legislative branch. That's what we should do. The mayor, he is our leader. The mayor, he is our leader, and we should entrust him, as long as there are checks and balances in place, to make sure that that specific person is doing what they are supposed to be doing, then we let him fulfill his duties that we elected him to do.
Mr. Evans.
I'm fully against it as well. You know, we elect our officials for that very reason, for them to do the job that they're set out to do. If you change the job midstream, what's the point of electing him? We can just appoint somebody to be the CEO. But that's not what being in America means. I mean, we elect people, we have the freedom to go to the polls and elect people, and that's who we chose. So I don't think any of his powers, let alone financial, should be worked out of him. That, it just doesn't make sense to me. We're electing him for a reason, keep it that way. Tim, you stole my checks and balances thing, you know, with the businesses and being a leader in my office, we have checks and balances with every department that we have. If it's not being checked two or three times, it's not feasible, it could not work. So the operational thing of government is checks and balances, legislative, executive, judicial, so on and so forth, and I support keeping that that way.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
I agree with what Tim said.
And Mr. Kraft.
I'll let to take his time. I'll take the extra time. Thank you. So honestly, I don't have to get up on a pedestal, this, last night was a happy moment. This is one of the reasons I actually got involved, because when I started going to town council meetings, I couldn't believe what I was seeing between the council and the mayor. And this whole effort to gut the office of our mayor, whether that be Mayor Hushour or future mayors, just kind of astounded me. And we did, we did get away from that. We have preserved our mayor's office and the functioning of the mayor's office. I will say one thing, though, it took way too long to make that decision, and we should have got out of the gate with, if it ain't broke, you don't need to fix it.
Also agree with what he said.
And I yield my time to him, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Washabaugh. We can't have a Mount Airy forum without a question about the Flatiron Building. We've received a number of questions about them, we'll try to combine a bunch of them and see what we get, so. Mr. Washabaugh, I'll start with you. First of all, what is your stance on the Flatiron Building? If elected to the council, can you state tonight that you support preservation of the building and that demolition is off the table for future discussions? And also, would you vote to move forward with the project if the estimated liability to residents were as much as a million dollars?
All right, I'll start at the top. So the council, a couple of years ago, voted demolish, then, a couple of meetings ago, voted to preserve. I was happy that they voted to preserve the Flatiron Building. For me, it's all about citizen involvement. We have a Flatiron Task Force right now that is committed, they are hardworking, they are organized, and they're doing everything they can to assist in the preservation process. As a legislative branch of government, we should do whatever we can to support those citizens. We should help them with their grant process, which I know Larry has already applied for the Maryland Preservation Grant along with another one. You know, we should do everything we can to back our citizens if that is what the overall feel of the town is. Now, let me be clear, I will not throw good money into a bad building. If at a certain point, it, we realize that it's just not fiscally responsible to save, then we were going to have to do what's best for the town. We cannot afford to keep depleting our reserves, as much as I love the building, just to keep it up. My overall goal would be to see it preserved, it would be to see it have a little bit more easier access, and then it would then be a return on investment by putting a useful piece of retail in that specific property to where the money that we are now investing, we can get a return on. And it keeps our small-town charm that nobody else has.
Thank you. Mr. Evans.
I'm for the preservation of the Flatiron Building, but I'm also a smart man with my money. So if, at some point, like Tim said, it doesn't make sense, if it's not safe or it doesn't make sense, then we have to bite the bullet. But, and on the other end of the spectrum, we have, what's it going to cost to take it down? What's it going to cost to fortify that wall? What's it going to cost to build that sidewalk out or replace it with something? Or move it? What are the options, you know? I think preservation and let these task force guys do their business, because they've been killing it, keep on doing it, and hopefully, we can get some grants and save the building. But again, at the end of the day, if it costs the town millions and millions and millions of dollars, then we have to rethink our stance on that.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
This is where you get to learn who I really am, because I'm pretty unfiltered about some things, and tearing that building down is the dumbest thing that I've ever heard. It's going to cost money to do that, it's going to cost your money. So everybody open up their pocketbook right now and write a check for a thousand dollars to tear that building down, because that's what essentially is going to be asked of you, to tear that down. It's your money that's going to take it down. So as contractor, I look at that building, no, just leave it, leave it as is. Okay, it's all about perspective. Leave that building as it is. That building has been there longer than I've been around, and it will be there long after I am gone. I can tell you that without a doubt. Now, what we do with the building and the money that we spend on the building, that's a whole nother issue in itself. So that's where you have to ask yourselves the questions, and this is how I believe the government should work. Do you want to spend 1.5 million dollars on a traffic circle, or do you want to spend 1.5 million dollars on the water? Or do you want to spend 1.5 million dollars on the Flatiron Building? That is where you need to come to the council and be like, this is where we want to spend our money. And then we go from there. Now, I'm all about using free money, if you want to call it that way, from the preservation grants that we can get to restore it, absolutely. It's, if you leave it alone, it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. So we should restore that building. But punchline, taking it down, absolutely not, because it's going to cost fortune out of your pocketbooks. We can save, repurpose that building, no problem, as long as we do so in a responsible manner and use all the resources available.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
This is easy. I am a volunteer grant writer on the Flatiron Building, and we will be collecting money to preserve this thing. But hallelujah, we've already done it, they're not going to knock it down. And I'd even say, it's also something we probably should even bring closer into the town council and to our government, if for no other reason than it's the center of our town. It's a piece of our heritage, and you know what? You got to go inside it. You know, for the last year now, we've been dragging our feet on this, all you have to do is go inside. We've done every study that everyone on the town council was interested in doing, but if you go inside, you don't need to, you don't need to be a brain surgeon or an engineer to figure out, this building is solid as a rock. And honestly, what you just said, it's true, that building is going to be standing, you know, after Armageddon, and it's solid as a rock, and the space is amazing, and there are so many ways, I don't know if any of you have taken the time to see Mr. Vallée's model. It's brilliant, and he did it himself. And there's so much we can do telecom-wise, fiber optics, this can be, this can be so many different things for us in this wonderful building, and it is solid as a rock.
Thank you. Mr. Munder.
All right. Thank you. All I can say for, first off, for starting with this, I was, I voted in favor of the recently passed ordinance, or whatever we decide to finally call that, for the preservation, a resolution for the preservation of the Flatiron Building, to allow the wonderful task force and the volunteers that we have done, that, to allow the job, to obtain grants from various state agencies and organizations to fund planning, design, and other activities to make sure what is the proper way to proceed forward with it. And numerous studies have shown that it is currently a stable in-place building, so, and no matter what happens with it, restoration, destruction, or I mean, tearing it down or anything and rebuilding the area, tax dollars will be spent for it, and will all be probably about the same cost. So at, currently, I would say, if we have the option of spending money on preserving a piece of Mount Airy history, that does allow for the town to obtain its small-town charm, and as part of the, as part of our application for historic, I want to say, place on the historical register of places, I believe, and that might not be the proper name, I would say, save it and keep it. It's part of the town, it grows on you.
Thank you. Okay, next question will be started by Mr. Evans. Another hot topic is development. You've all touched on it already, and we got a lot of questions about it, so here's another compound question. Going under the assumption, you are somewhat committed to stopping development, what is your strategy against such a well-funded development? And on top of that, has the current council acted in good faith or yielded to the loudest crowd on submissions for development? Let's start with Mr. Evans.
So I'll start by saying I'm not against development. I'm against high-density overdevelopment. It doesn't fit the town's harmonious, is what I keep hearing. It's not harmonic with the town. This is a small town, we don't need Russian military barracks lining 27, townhouses, apartments, all that stuff that the Pleasants Company builds out in Frederick, we don't need that in Mount Airy. So I'm not against development, I think it should be sustainable, I think it should be slow, and it should fit the infrastructure. The infrastructure should be looked at before we even think about talking development. We don't have the roads, schools, we definitely don't have the water now, safe water at least, but we need to look at the infrastructure before we look at developments. As far as the town council, I often ask myself, what am I getting myself into, as I look at these guys up on the podium there, and like, it's a tough job, it's thankless, but I'm ready to tackle it, and I'm ready to educate myself and figure out what kind of zoning things we can do to prevent developers from coming in here and trying to steal our small-town from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
I'm a developer's worst nightmare. I just, I'm a contractor myself, so I see the aftermath of what happens when they come in and they build high-density developments, and then they leave. And then I'm in them, fixing them, one year, two years, three years into it. There's also nowhere to park when I go to fix them. I also recently had a conversation with one of the former volunteer fire department chiefs, and has anybody asked if the developer asked the fire department how they're going to get in and do what they need to do in the development? Probably not. The, as far as I'm concerned, I want to put up a big giant iron curtain around Mount Airy. Take a look at Portland, Oregon, and this is at the state level. They have a development boundary around Portland, so that you can't just build on top of Portland. We should do the same thing here. We can keep Home Depot in Frederick, we don't need a Home Depot here. We can keep the townhomes down in Montgomery County, we don't need them here. What we have now is the value in this town, is that it's 20 minutes from everything, and it has that small-town charm, small-town charm. If we take that away, value's going to go down, traffic's going to go up, and I'm not will, or I am willing to put up a big fight with the developer. I was asked the question, what if they file a lawsuit? Well, that's great, file a lawsuit. The cost of a lawsuit is going to be nothing compared to the cost of the aftermath of large development. So think about that.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft.
90 seconds. If elected, I will work with District 4 Commissioner Michael Gerhahn, who is a Mount Airy resident, to implement a moratorium on all commercial development for at least six months, until we can rectify and figure out if our infrastructure can support the kind of development that is not only being proposed on, I'm just going to call it the property, but it's also for future development, too. Okay? So we have a water for challenge, for sure, but I hope we get to talk about the education and the blueprint for Maryland and education, because I'll tell you what, the tsunami of population that will be coming in and then focused on our local school system is going to blow those schools apart, and you know what? We're not going to get the same funding regardless of the population that comes in because of the qualifications that the state of Maryland currently has placed on funding for each municipality. So once again, if elected, this is my if elected moment, I am going to work immediately towards a moratorium, at least of six months, on any further development until we all get together, collaborate, and figure out if we can even sustain the kind of growth that is waving us in the face right now.
Thank you. Mr. Munder.
Robert, could you repeat the question? I think Tim and I heard the first portion of it, but maybe not the second.
Okay, sure. And it is a combination of a couple of different questions. So assuming you are committed to stopping development, what is your strategy against such a well-funded opponent? In addition to that, what is your position on the submissions for development? And has the current council acted in good faith or yielded to the loudest crowd?
Submissions of development, okay. All I can say for development, as some of my other candid friends here have suggested, that development will, unfortunately, development will occur. The trick is how we will control it matters, really. And throughout my 10-year, four years, I will, I've advocated for it in many ways, not development itself, but how we control it, how we limited it, limited it to be compatible with the town. I know MXD is not working out the way a lot of us would have hoped, and that's why I've submitted many changes to it. Unfortunately, the town council has not agreed with those changes to move them forward to impact the current process that is going through the council and the planning commission or for future developments. I know we have a current APFO standard, I know that some of it could be looked at and reexamined to be applied at different times or earlier in the development process, and I would like to say also, one of the first ordinances that I submitted and was passed by the previous council was related to a project on Prospect and Hill Street where a developer was trying to put in a rather large number of apartments there, and I got an ordinance introduced, and we related, and I wanted to say, we continue to the inappropriate development along Prospect Avenue that would have hurt this town. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh.
So as far as development as a whole, I'm not against development. We just have to make sure the development fits into the fabric of our community. We have a standard and guidelines set in our APFO. If you want to develop here, you follow our APFO, which is put in place to protect our way of life. That takes the human element of mistake out of it. If you follow the standards and guidelines of our APFO, we cannot make a mistake. When we start waiving those standards and guidelines in our APFO, you start bringing the human mistake element into it, and you are no longer protecting the long-term future of your, of your town. You're not doing it. We need to stick to the standards and guidelines of our APFO. If you want to build here, and I will call out the Beck property specifically, because we all know that's what we're talking about. Okay, our APFO says you need 100 acres for every three residents? Give us 46 acres of open space and you're welcome to build here. It's that simple. Because that is what will protect our town, and that is the rules of which we are currently in, to say that this will not tax our way of life, period. We don't waive anything for anyone.
Thank you. I think that's a good segue into this question. The town currently has an 80-acre deficit of public open space. Do you support the planning commission granting an open space waiver for the Beck property? And we'll start with Mr. Gilbert.
No. Actually, back to the last question real quick, because there was something that was very specific about it. How do I feel about a well-funded opponent? I don't care how much money they have, because we have the town. So they can throw money at it, and throw money at it, and throw money at it, and if certain things are in place, they're just throwing money out the window. Zoning can be rewritten, as you saw. So when zoning doesn't support development, well, that's one part of the solution. Moratoriums, not six months, six years, or more. There are multiple solutions to stop, curb, and only allow responsible improvement. We're improving what we already have. We don't need to add anything more to it because it can't sustain it. anything more to it, because it can't sustain it. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Do you support the planning commission granting an open space waiver for the Beck property?
No. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
No, I do not. And I would like to say, I call this the property. This is much bigger than just the Beck property. This is about future development. Okay? So, again, no, I do not support an open space waiver. And again, it's a shame, because you know, the Beck family in themselves have been a part and parcel of this community from the get-go. Okay? And it strikes me as curious that they've been good stewards throughout the entire life of their presence in this town, and then suddenly, at the end of the road, they're not good stewards? It's curious, isn't it? There must be something else in the picture. And they're called the developers that come to our town council meeting every month and tell us how uncollaborative we are, and how unhelpful we are, and that we don't want to work with them. Okay? So, we need to have a little bit bigger vision. This isn't just about the Beck property. This is about future development across Mount Airy, and what that looks like, and if we can support it.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
Thank you. As currently drafted, the 10% requirement for open space is a little bit low for granting a waiver, considering that many of the other residential zoning sections in our code are based, the more density there is being proposed, the higher open space requirement that needs to be given towards the town. So, in my, in several of the ordinances that I tried to correct this, I went from anywhere from 50 to 30% open space. My latest one was 25% open space requirement before a waiver would be granted. So, I do not support the current 10% minimum that is in code.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh?
I think I mistakenly answered this question prior. I do not support any waiver for open space. As a youth sports advocate, I have firsthand told our children, we do not have the space for you to play. I'm sorry, you're on a wait list. That is not doing what is best for our town. Now, I understand the Beck's families' right to sell their property, and their desire to get the top dollar for it. I support them in that venture. That being said, the town has the right to dictate what goes on that land. And more importantly, the responsibility of protecting our town, and its citizens' way of life, by ensuring all developments adhere to our current APFO. If it does, build. If it doesn't, fix your development plans or move along. Ensuring our APFO is followed does not prevent you from building. It may prevent you from making the most amount of profit, but that is a business decision that the developer will have to make. We do not have an obligation to developers. While we do have an obligation to our citizens, and I for one am tired of telling our youth that we don't have enough fields for you.
Thank you. And Mr. Evans?
I agree with every single one of you guys. There's not enough sports fields, gyms, anything for the kids, skate parks, whatever the case may be. There's not enough of it. And you want to put up 680 houses, or townhouses and apartments, to bring more kids in? That doesn't, that doesn't make sense. So, that's part of the infrastructure argument that I had earlier. I take my kid to basketball, and we sit in the gym, and he plays his game, and then there's not even enough room to stand. You're standing on the sideline, the ball comes and hits you, and you've got to move out of the way. And then, as soon as the game's over, you've got to run and get out of the gym real quick, because the next team's coming in, and they've got to start their game immediately. Another instance is my son's baseball team. They're fighting for practice fields right now. You can't even practice during the week, because you have to fight another team. I think Mr. Washabaugh said volunteers pitted against themselves for practice fields. I mean, it's ridiculous. I do not support the APFO waiver in any form or fashion. I think it should be greatly increased. And I also don't support any waiver or special exemption on any level. I think that we have our codes and our zones written for our town. We can revise them if need be, but the developers need to look at that and know that we're going to stand by that and not waive on it. And I don't care about the ROI, return on investment.
Thank you. This question will start with Mr. Kraft. And this is a, it's a long question, and it's a very specific question, but potentially very important. So, it's from a person living in a development bordering on Route 27, just south of the Mount Airy Fairgrounds. Says that they have attempted for years to get the State Highway Administration to erect sound barriers along this frontage, but they've got nothing, not even guardrails. Earlier this month, referencing the horrific fireball-producing accident on Route 15 in Frederick that killed residents of a home, highlighted their fears relating to an 18-wheel truck coming off the road, and its contents ending up in a neighborhood, in a neighboring backyard. The speed limit of the section that borders their yards is 50 miles per hour, and the person says they hear the brakes of the 18-wheelers at all hours of day and night. So, would the candidates help these people in their fight for the proper safeguards and sound barriers to avoid a Route 15 accident in their development? Mr. Kraft?
The question is how. And again, now that we're no longer horizontally attacking each other between the council and the mayor, we need to go outward, and we need to work with our Carroll County Commissioners, and bring them into the picture, and see what we can, again, there's a whole bunch of reflection that needs to be done there. But let's use those resources at hand. We can't do some of this stuff alone. Clearly, I'm not a builder, and I can't build walls. But what I can do, as a town council member, is to go to the right people and know, and create those relationships outward towards the Carroll County community, and see how we might solicit funding, and see about the, how we can actually put something like that in place. But I am absolutely for that sort of interaction with our, with our commissioners outside of Mount Airy. There we can, there we can get some contribution from, from those folks, too. And that's why we voted for him, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
Well, sometimes it's hard to get the State Highway Administration to do what you want, unfortunately. I'm not saying I would not support it, but I would, as currently elected, we have been, and I have been, working with our Carroll County elective officials to elevate, I want to say, the concerns of improvements along Route 27. And I would like to report that, I believe, the Carroll County Planner came before the planning commission at the last meeting, and indicated that our efforts are beginning to pay off, because every year, the Carroll County Commissioners, or any county commissioner or county, must submit the top 10, top five projects to the state. And I would like to report that this past year, we have finally made the top five, and the Carroll County Commissioners have agreed to that, and have passed it along to our state representatives, have passed it along to the State Highway Administration, to start looking at improvements and changes to the Route 27 corridor. What these will entail, I do not know at this time, but I will be more than happy to work with them to address the concerns of these citizens for noise barriers and guardrails, at least potentially the guardrails at first, because I know the State Highway does have certain criteria for noise barriers that they will not waiver on. But if we elect, I will continue to work with the Carroll County Commissioners and our Frederick County Commissioners on mutually beneficial projects, as I have been doing in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh?
So, the simple answer is yes. If we have a group or a community of concerned citizens, and they need an advocate, that's what I was elected to do. Be their advocate, be their voice at a higher level, and try and get, in this instance, the State Highway Administration to listen, to understand the ability to be proactive, and avoid a catastrophe instead of reactive, and then make the changes. Now that the Route 32 updates have been done, which has been a major focus in the State Highway Administration, I will be a thorn in their side, until they recognize our needs to get what we want done, done. I know in 2018 or 2019, they came out and did a traffic study, and found that most of our intersections were failing. So, it's not just one instance where we need to get the State Highway involved, the State Highway Administration involved. There's many instances in this town where we need to start working with them. That time would be much well-spent than attacking each other, and going after our elected officials. So, that's how I plan on implementing that time, to try and get them to come in and help us.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
I'm all for it. Our town as a whole, when you ask us to do something, we need to look into it and give you an honest response, whether it's doable or not. The safety of our citizens, especially this severe of an issue, needs to be addressed pretty quickly. I'm glad to hear about the new reports, Carl. I'm glad to hear that that stuff is looking good for us. But we've got to do more. We've got to knock down their doors. We've got to tell them, this isn't safe. If a truck goes through someone's house at 50 miles an hour, that's not going to be good. That's going to be really, really bad for this town, and for the people of the town. If elected, I told you guys, I'm all in, and this is part of it. I'd be nonstop emailing, calling, whatever it takes, to get someone to listen to me, in order to get this resolved as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And Mr. Gilbert?
Can you repeat the question, please?
It's a pretty long one.
It is.
It's a question about, from a person who owns a home on 27. They've been trying to get the State Highway Administration to get sound barriers and safety barriers, even guardrails. They have not been successful. In light of the horrific crash that killed people in Frederick, how, and they're very worried that an 18-wheeler, they hear brakes all day and all night, they're very worried that an 18-wheeler is going to spill its contents all over their yard, that sort of thing. So, basically, would the candidates help them in their fight for proper safeguards and sound barriers to avoid that sort of accident happening in their development?
Help them, yes. But to what extent? I honestly can't tell you. For one, an 80,000-pound 18-wheeler is going to go through what it wants, and if it's going to end up in your backyard, it's going to end up in your backyard. What it takes to stop one of those things is a lot more than, you know, putting up simple barriers right there. It's not going to do it. For the sound barrier, okay, priorities. Did you choose to recently move next to 27? Okay, well, if that's the case, you knew the risk when you got there. But I will help you with your concern. However, we have to then weigh that concern with all the other concerns that are out there. And I think that's where it's important to be honest, and have that dialogue of, yes, we are doing what we can. Some of it is within our control, some of it is not. I could be annoying to a point, but then I'm taking away from other things that may or may not be more important.
Thank you. Coming at you from the senior center here in Mount Airy, here's a question from a senior. The senior population in Mount Airy is growing. What can we do to assure developers include affordable housing for seniors in the future? And also, what is your stance on how we can expand our senior center to meet the growing need of seniors in Mount Airy? And yes, we'll start with Mr. Munder.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure about that, Robert. Just wanted to make sure. Affordable housing during the plans, no matter what comes up before the council, if we have say over it, over the development or the pre-concept plan, I will always make sure that I advocate for, I want to say, villas, or agent-place type housing. Make sure that it is affordable for various different income levels, because unfortunately, right now, the state considers affordable, you know, low-income in Mount Airy approximately like mid-60s, $60,000. But I will try my best to make sure that at least options are included in any designs that come before the council or the planning commission, to make sure that the residents that have lived in Mount Airy their whole lives, that have chosen to age in place in this town, can hopefully remain in this town in the long term. As for working with the senior center or expansion, we are currently in, hopefully, in preliminary talks with Carroll County to either expand, or relocate, or try and find land for the senior center or library. But first, we need to try and find a plan, I mean, the land, and develop a working plan with Carroll County. So, I know that both of these facilities are at their max capacity, and I would love to see the library or the senior center with something similar that's currently redone in Westminster. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh?
You know, the growing senior population is a, is a good thing, in my opinion. These are people that have lived in Mount Airy for a long time. They love Mount Airy so much, they don't want to move out of Mount Airy. Therefore, they want to stay in their hometown, and it's our responsibility to give them a place to do so that's affordable on a fixed income. To me, it's all about planning. Most senior communities do not strain our APFOs the way a MXD would, or a, any R2 or R7 would. They do not strain our APFOs. They do not strain our school systems. To me, that's one of the best types of communities that we can put in, in this little bit of remaining land that we have. I for one have told you before, I plan on being a lifelong Mount Airy citizen. I'm 38. I've already been here for 15 years. I plan on being here for a lot longer. So, you know, I would love to have a place that I could afford in this community that I love, on a fixed income in the future, for myself and my wife. As far as the senior center expansion, you know, I would look to do anything I could. I would, I would want to sit down with their representatives, see what it is they want, see what it is they need, and then see how we, as a town, can fiscally and responsibly help them get what it is they desire. And, you know, other than that, that's what I would do.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
We need more senior living, point blank. You guys need bigger facilities, and we need more senior living. How we can make that affordable, I don't have the answers for you yet, but I plan to educate myself, and work on planning, and collaborate with the council and the commissions, to make sure that that's included. You guys are a very vital part of our Mount Airy citizens, and we support all of you guys. So, as leaders, we need to take that stuff into account. Mike Geren was asked the very same question at his town hall, and he kind of looked at me, and I looked at him back, and was like, and he, he's taken it very seriously. I've talked to him about it. So, you know, the expansion of the senior center, and I believe was, senior center was the question that was asked of him. How do we fund it? You know, how do, where are we going to put it? Is it here? Is it somewhere else? All those questions need to be asked, but they should be asked pretty soon, and put that on our plate, so that we can attack it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
Here's an idea for you. First, what kind of senior center do you want to build? Let's figure it out. Let's give the seniors something to do. What do you want? I worked in a senior retirement building, if you want to call it, for four weeks, and it was the most depressing experience that I had ever had. I felt so bad for the residents of this place. I've also seen the complete opposite where my grandmother went, and that place, I would love to retire there. That'll never happen, but, I mean, it was, it was the bee's knees. It was great. So, if you want to do something with the Beck property, let's put a big, giant senior community there. The average markup, per the statistics that I was given in school, is between 30 to 40% of profit when something is built. I got my 10% profit, and then the developer, whoever they be, is they're going to have their 15 or 20% profit on top of that. So, it compounds over the life of a project. So, if you take this, just say for numbers, $2 million project, 30% of that is just profit alone. So, why don't we go in the reverse direction? Let's figure out what we want to build, and then go find a developer and be like, hey, you're only going to make 5% on this. You're going to make some money. It's not a waste of time, but this is what we want to do. This is what our seniors want. This has all the amenities that they want. It fiscally makes sense, and go in that direction. That's my immediate solution, idea, wishful thinking to that. Because I could sit here and talk about it forever. It's, you know, define affordable housing. That's, depending on who you ask, very different.
Thank you. And Mr. Kraft?
I'm particularly concerned. I'm concerned about the youthfulness of the other people up at this table. I think I'm the only one who has an AARP card, and the wisdom that comes along with that. Now, I shouldn't be so whimsical, because this is actually very personal to me, and I, I hope I don't cry. My, my mother was a, was a director of gerontology for multiple nursing homes and senior centers throughout her life, and she taught me how to work with seniors, and how to work with special needs folks. The way you expand a senior center is not by building. You know what? senior center is not by building. You know what it is? You do it from the inside out. You go and you visit the seniors. I go visit my seniors every Sunday after church, and I tell you what, I have a blast. And I hear the same story every five minutes from over and over again, but it's a blast. We have so much fun together. So, you know, I really don't have, I don't see any particular need even, and you're welcome to tell me differently, but I don't know that we need to build anything more. I think what we need to do is introduce the community more into the senior centers through whatever vehicle that might be. But the first thing you gotta do is just get inside and participate. And I got my ukulele out in the car, and I can do that after the town hall tonight, because that's what I do on Sundays. Thanks.
Thank you. This question will be for Mr. Washabaugh. Would the candidates consider and pursue sources of water outside of drilling new wells, i.e. buying water from Frederick or Montgomery County, or pulling raw water from a reservoir in Carroll County?
That's a great question. For me, if it's a necessity, you know, water is our lifeline. We absolutely need it. So if it came down to the point to where we had to purchase it from an outside source, I mean, what choice do we have? We would have to cut costs in our budget and reallocate those funds to make sure that we have what we need to survive. But I would, again, ask you why we would be in that situation to begin with. Why are we having to buy outside sources of water? And it's because of reckless development and not thinking long-term. We always look at short-term gains without realizing the long-term ramifications of those decisions. We have to stop doing that. We have to start balancing the short-term gain with the long-term ramification to ensure that our tax dollars do not have to go to Montgomery County, just to buy water to live. We gotta be better.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
I would like to avoid it at all costs. It doesn't make sense for us to have to go to outside sources to get healthy, safe water. First step, I would, you know, how can we fix the PFAS and the forever chemicals? Is it unfixable? Is it gonna cost them $10 million? Whatever it is, if that's not fixable and we need the water, then obviously, we're gonna have to bite the bullet and do that. As a last resort for me, I don't want that. I hope it doesn't come to that, because it doesn't make sense for us to have to go to Carroll County or Frederick County or wherever it is, or build new pipelines or whatever it is. Our water needs to be fixed, and we need to not have to do the outside sourcing.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
I always tell a client, do you want to spend 20 grand one time, or do you want to spend 10 grand three times? Do the math. So you can either wait just a little bit and do it the right way, or you can throw a Band-Aid on it, and I'll be back in six months, and you just spent, you know, another 10 grand, and then another 10 grand. Water's the same way. Right now, the filtration system that we have completely needs to be updated, like, really updated. But also with a system that's easily maintainable down the road. You don't want to buy something that's proprietary, and then you need the special filters from the special place that's not making them anymore, and, you know, then we put ourselves in a bigger problem. Giving our tax dollars, your water bill going to another county, that we did something wrong if it comes to that. Now, we need water, so if it comes down to that, okay, but you will be very informed if I have anything to do with it, if I'm elected. That's something that the town as a whole has got to come together and be like, hey, once we start this train, it's going. So ask yourselves, why did we get there in the first place, though?
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
I will be honest. I have absolutely no expertise whatsoever in this domain, and I would be wholly dependent on experts on this issue before making any decisions. So that's my response. I don't have to be the smartest person in the room, and I have no expertise whatsoever in water matters.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
If we ended up having to purchase water from an out-of-county source or reservoir in Carroll County, this town would be in some dire straits, and we would have some more concerning problems with what's causing the water shortages. And as a former member of the Water and Source Commission, I can say that a lot of these options have been looked at and have been rejected by the town due to, solely due to cost, or, you know, just can't be done. We would have to pay exorbitant amount of money to make any of this to happen, even if, I don't know, wells were explored in other parts of the surrounding area, they were proven not to be feasible or viable for the town needs at this time. The closest reservoir might be Gillis Falls, but I can pretty much say that that will not be developed in any time soon. So we have no feasible county water source to pull from. That is including Frederick and Montgomery County. So I want to preserve and protect what we have and make sure that it's not drawn down by overdevelopment and pollution in our wells. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this has been great. We are unfortunately running short of time, so this is gonna be the last question. We didn't get to everything, but we got to a lot. So this one's gonna start with Mr. Evans. And should council members initiate changes to the town charter prior to citizen approval? And again, we'll start with Mr. Evans.
I believe the citizens should be informed, depending on the topic. I guess this is something that I'm gonna have to educate myself on a little bit more, the pros and cons and the legalities of things. But I think the citizens should be informed, and there should be public hearings, and comments should be taken before anything is done, any kind of charter amendment or rewriting of anything, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
If you want to rewrite the charter, that's like me giving myself a raise. It kind of doesn't make sense. I shouldn't be voting on that. You should. That should go to the ballot. We should sit there and present a bunch of ideas on this is why we want to change the charter, and this is, you know, what makes sense and what doesn't. This is outdated. This is the direction that we need to go. And then that should be your choice, and your choice solely, not the council's choice, because that is then what dictates everything that happens after.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Right out of the gate, I have wasted so much paper printing out our town charter and all the paper that's available online. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. We have so many other things knocking at our doorstep right now in 2023. We got the blueprint for the schools knocking on our door that we need to figure out. We've got legalized marijuana knocking on our doorstep and what that looks like in our town. We've got head shops at each end of Main Street. I think we got a sufficient amount of things to focus on before we waste any more time rewriting our town charter. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
Can you repeat the question, please, sir?
Sure. Should council members initiate changes to the town charter prior to citizen approval?
The whole, for the municipalities, the whole charter change process is governed and dictated by the state constitution. So at times, I can agree with Mr. Kraft, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But there's, or at other times, that as council member and elected officials that you become aware of with government operations need to be corrected to make sure that the town representatives or the citizens are protected from potentially harmful effects of other elected officials. And the only way to do that is to initiate charter changes to that, to make sure that the citizens, town staff are protected from elected officials, and the citizens have a working and functioning government in this town. But I do not agree with citizens need to be informed of the charter changes. The state constitution does allow for a citizen referendum to be taken. If they get enough votes, they can put it on the ballot. So the best I can say is for the citizens of the town to please, we have seen it now, to get involved and stay informed of the operations and what your local government is doing, to make sure that nothing is tried to be done under the table, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Washabaugh?
So as far as rewriting the town charter is concerned, I've been following along with a lot of these meetings over the past few years. Personally, I'm tired of seeing charter amendments. I want to see action. I want to see us just get along and do what's best for our town. Do I agree with it? If it is in the best interest of the citizens of Mount Airy, which is who we are elected to represent, and it's something we have to do, then maybe that's a decision we have to make. I've never, I have not had the pleasure of sitting in his seat yet, so there might be some information that I don't know. What I will say is transparency is paramount. So as far as I'm concerned, should we, if we have to? But for what reason would we not include our citizens in any major decision that has to do with the town that they live in? I personally can't think of a reason why it wouldn't include it as an input, but again, I haven't sat in his seat. But until I do, as far as I'm concerned, transparency is paramount. It is key, and it goes along with earning your trust and keeping it, which, again, is one of my ultimate goals in being your elected official.
Thank you. And that concludes the question and answer portion of the forum. We do appreciate all the questions and wish we could have gotten even more. But we will now take closing statements from each of the candidates. Each candidate may present a closing statement for two minutes in length, and we will start this time with Mr. Gilbert.
I wrote, I think it's 15 pages, of my thoughts, feelings, positions, and put it up on Facebook in various groups. And as I walk around, or start to walk around, because I haven't yet, I'm waiting to do so, I encourage everybody to read it. And as you read it and you sit there and you absorb everything that we talked about today, I want you to remember that there are multiple layers to the problems that we have. There's no immediate, oh, this is the fix, and then we walk away from it, because it's not. There's second, there's third, there's fourth order effects that are gonna come from all the decisions that we make. I know we haven't talked about it today, but the police department is a hot topic, if we're gonna build a building or not. Well, just earlier this afternoon, I was talking to a retired volunteer chief, and he made me privy to some information that they're changing the way that the fire department is gonna be run. I'm not completely aware of everything that's going on, but that changes my opinion on that, and it's gonna change your opinion as well. So it's important that, as we take all this information in, that we think of the biggest picture, not just have tunnel vision on, this is what I'm concerned about, and that's it, and nothing else. Because as potentially elected officials, it's our responsibility to take all the information that we have and make the best decision for you, because that's what you elected us to do. So just remember, educate yourself as much as you can so that you see the biggest picture that you can. And my cell phone number is right on there directly. Reach out, ask questions, give comments, because, you know, just like he said, he's not the expert when it comes to water. I'm not the expert on everything either. I don't have the biggest picture. I don't know everything that's going on, and I know some of you don't know everything that's going on, because the stories that I've gotten from you, all that go to my heart, are sometimes very different.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Well, I hope everyone has gotten a better idea tonight of your candidates, more specifically of my candidacy to represent you on the town council, and my ultimate hope that you might even vote for me on the 2nd of May in 2023. As a current Mount Airy resident bred in the cornfields of Illinois, I feel as if I have come full circle. In fact, this evening is almost serendipitous. As part of this Easter week, I believe that this election on the 2nd of May is about renewal. With this election, we all have an opportunity to turn the tenor of the town council towards one of optimism, collaboration, functionality, and forward-looking, long-range planning. I hope you leave here tonight, neighbors, more optimistic than you may have been previously after this past year's town council meetings. And I hope also that you recognize in me, a fellow Mount Airy citizen, who knows the challenges of raising a family on a limited income, who remains steadfastly devoted to his family both near and far, and who would be worthy of serving you these next four years on the Mount Airy Town Council. You are also invited to the Bowie Basak's game on August 12th at 6:00 PM, where I will be singing the National Anthem, if I don't forget the words. Maybe with the ukulele. So tonight, please allow me to ask you to vote for me, Stephen "Pops" Kraft, on May 2nd for Town Council. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Munder?
One of the experiences that I have been going through the past four years running, and this one has been going door-to-door during the campaign, that is about the only way that you can obtain the view of what the citizens of this town see here. I have seen various aspects, locations, what makes this town special. And I have no intent on wavering from preserving those traits of this town. And I would like to thank all those who have come out tonight to the senior center for the forum and watched it on TV. It has been very informative here. But to, in summary, I believe the combination of being a longtime area resident has given me the ability to see how the area has changed, how the surrounding area, I mean, Montgomery County, PGK, all there, Frederick especially, has changed from small rural settings to almost urban metropolis. And I do not want that for this town. It would destroy what makes the town special. We are a unique, special place among a large area, and I would like to preserve that. I believe the experience and insight I've gained on matters the town is currently and will be facing makes me a good choice for the town council. Experience counts, especially now more than ever, with the issues of development, water, funding and creation of a police station, and what all the other issues that the town are currently facing and will be in the future. Experience counts, and I bring that and will remain keeping that experience on this town council if reelected. As I stated at the beginning of this presentation, that I've been honored to be your council member for the past four years, and I will be even more honored if the citizens choose to reelect me to keep representing them on their issues for the next four years in Mount Airy. But no matter what, come out to the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company reception hall on May 2nd from 7:00 to 8:00 and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Washabaugh?
I'd like to thank everyone who has joined us this evening. It's nice to see some familiar faces here in person, kind of calm the nerves a little bit. I'd like to leave you with a few final but important thoughts. In my campaign video, I made it a priority to speak about bringing civility back to our small-town government, and always putting what is best for our town and its citizens at the forefront of all discussions moving forward. I am happy to say that I believe this has already started to happen, sorry, I lost my spot, through this campaign process and election cycle. Most of the individuals running for a seat on the council have spent the majority of this campaign process supporting one another. It has honestly made this endeavor something that I will look back on fondly, because I can say confidently that we all want what is best for Mount Airy. With that being said, I do believe I am the right candidate for one of the open seats on the council. With each discussion that I take part in, I will always ask myself these questions. Do I believe that the majority of our citizens want or agree to this? And am I adequately representing the citizens of Mount Airy by putting their needs and the needs of the town above all else? Those questions will always be paramount in my decision-making process, and as long as I can honestly say yes to both, I will be able to stand behind the decisions that I make. I am looking forward to bringing civility back to Mount Airy. I hope to have the opportunity to bring an honest, practical, and empathetic viewpoint to the council that mimics the needs and wants for our citizens. On May 2nd, I ask for your vote, so that once again, Mount Airy can win with Washabaugh. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Evans, you started things off, and as things turn out, you get to have the last word.
Thank you. Let me first start by saying, this has been an amazing experience from the start. When I initially started this whole thing, in my mind that I was gonna run for council to fix everything. to run for council to fix everything, I really thought I bit off more than I could chew. It's a thankless job. I watch the council meetings and the commission meetings, and it really is, it takes a lot to make you guys proud and lead the citizens of Mount Airy, but I pledged to do so. I've met a lot of interesting and really, really nice people while walking around, and if I haven't yet, I certainly will. So look for us on the streets. I'm sure everybody will be walking and talking in the next couple of weeks. But thank you, Carroll Media Center. Thank you, Bob. I want to be a leader for you guys. I want to be the leadership that listens. I have been a leader in a company, small company that was built in Mount Airy, in a basement of my boss's house, and I have grown as a leader, and I plan to lead you guys in the same way that I lead my 82 employees now. Thank you. Amazing turnout out here. I can't imagine how many are people watching at home, but thank you, guys, for coming out and spending your evening with us.
All right. Great job, candidates. First rate. We'd like to thank all of our candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and thanks to the Mount Airy Senior Center for letting us host the event here. Also, a special thanks to everyone who submitted questions either before the event or during the meeting tonight. As a reminder, the forum has been recorded, and it will be available for on-demand viewing on the CMC website, carrollmediacenter.org, as well as on YouTube. The forum will also be rebroadcast on Comcast cable channels, HD 1086 and Channel 19. The first rebroadcast will begin on Wednesday, April 5th, 7:00 p.m. on Channel 19, 9:00 p.m. on HD 1086. Folks, thanks so much for your attendance. We're adjourned.